With the feeling of immense pride. You know, there are many words that can describe this moment, but pride just seems to dominate. We're so proud of our own Elise Torbitt, who was born in this community. Well, and was reared by you, this community, and now we have elevated her to be a leader. Now I want to begin by asking you to join me in giving her a wonderful round of applause. Our group commissioner, Commissioner Elise Torbitt. I'd like to welcome you to this peaceful transfer of power. In Megan County, Tuskegee, Alabama. I also like to thank in advance Commissioner Ernest McGruder, who served in this capacity. And so we want to give him a round of applause and thank him for his service. Now I, where's the passion, passion? Do you hear? Okay, okay. An opening prayer.
I do like. Anthony, uh, definitely Anthony.
Pastor Joshua. Anthony, let's give. Pastor Joshua Anthony, give him a round of applause as he leads us in a word of prayer.
Set us pray. Our gracious and eternal Father, we bow first and foremost to thank you for this day, a day that we've never seen before and one we'll never see again. But we thank you Father God because you've offered to allow us to wait, to prosper, to be blessed, to show favor in this day. Father God, we love you. We thank you for your grace, your love, your mercy, to continue to pour out of this county, upon this world, and the friendship that will last forever. Now Father God, I ask be prepared for this installation program. Father God, we thank you for all those who are gathered here. Father God, we thank you for the love that is shared from heart to heart that is gathered here, Father God. We simply give you all the praise in this moment, Father God. Yes, certain names may be on the program, but you get all the praise and all the honor, Father God. We thank you for caring, uh, Commissioner Tarver. We thank you for giving her the heart to run. We thank you for leading and guiding her throughout this project, process. Father God, we thank you for this moment that we can welcome her, uh, into a new journey, into a new season in her life. Father God, we pray that, uh, what she's able to do with the commission will be fruitful, will be, uh, a blessing unto the upbuilding of your kingdom. Father God, we just pray that all work together in harmony and in unity to do what is right for your citizens. Father God, we love you. We worship you. We adore you. We pray, uh, for the campus and we pray for all those affected. We pray, Father God, uh, that you simply continue to let your light shine, Father God. That all of us may know what it is to have a true love that's having a relationship with you. Father God, we love you. We worship you and we adore you. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Thank you so much, Pastor Anthony. Now we have a musical selection by Gloria Brown. Let's give her a round of applause as she comes. Give Ms. Brown another round of applause. Wasn't that beautiful? Absolutely. Now we will have a poetic rendering by Dr. Lindsay Lunford. Let's give her a round of applause as she comes.
Good afternoon, everyone. This poem was inspired by, um, The Hill We Climb by Amanda Gorman, which was the poem she read in 2021 after the election of Biden. And, um, this poem, I was looking back on this moment in time, in this moment in history, and that's what inspired this poem. So I'll read that for you now. It's always been about going forward, but looking back to do so. It's how we carry the children. We've got to look back to go on, and we will go on. We'll follow the road as we clear it. It's our future. We will be the ones to steer it. Let's face it, we've always been consistent. That's what got us here and what will get us there. There. That's where we're going. One day we'll look back with pride on how we learned to live with the hard truths of this world. It's always been about going forward, but looking back to do so. It's how we carry the children. Some things are deeper than victory. They're already written. They're chosen, and they're really, really brave. To the ones who lead, may we trust you. To the ones who follow, may we do right by them. And to all of us, may we continue, because it's always been about going forward, but looking back to do so. It's how we carry the children. It's how we'll get to tomorrow. Thank you.
Let's give Dr. Lunford another round of applause for such a beautiful and appropriate poem. And now is just the time. This is the moment that we've all been waiting for. The swearing in of the newly elected commissioner of District Three. Commissioner Elise Torbitt sworn in by Pastor James Taylor. Repeat after me. I.
I, Elise Torbitt.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
Offer. That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
United States.
And Constitution.
And Constitution.
Of Alabama. So long as I continue.
So long as I continue.
A citizen thereof.
A citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And honestly discharge.
And honestly discharge.
The duties of the office.
Duties of the office.
Of county commission. Upon which I am about to enter.
Of which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Let's give Commissioner Elise Torbitt another round of applause. Uh, we can do better than that. Let's give her a round of applause. We are in good hands. Believe you me. We're gonna have a few very short remarks. Let's, uh, make sure that we acknowledge her family, her parents, and siblings, and relatives, and people who have flown in all from all around the country to witness this sacred event. Let's give them a round of applause as well. It takes a village. To raise the child. And so we have a few friends and family which will come forth and have a few remarks. Very short remarks, um, to celebrate this moment.
How's everybody doing? I hadn't really prepared anything to say, but, um, ever since I have met Elise, I've known her to be a very humanitarian person, and she's always had a very, very in-tuned spirit with the human spirit. And she very much so cares about this community. And so when she told me that she was running for this position, I was all the way on board with her the entire time. And everything that she's done throughout the process of going throughout the community to really touch the people, to really hear their concerns. I just know that she is going to be an outstanding leader, and she is going to be a part of bringing a lot of progression to this community. And so I hope that everybody is, you know, excited, as excited about this momentous occasion as I am. And I'm looking forward to a beautiful four years moving forward. Oh, yeah, of course. I'm Elise's brother.
Hello, everybody.
Hey.
I'm Elise's father. Uh, Elise does a very thing hard. She was there when she was born, and I was there for people, animals also. She don't want to see anything hurt or pride having harm to her. So she came to me, uh, one morning because I can't leave the house without seeing her leave. I can't even sneak out the house. She's gonna see her father every morning. So she came to me and she asked me about, uh, what she wanted to do, and I said, yes. But she wasn't sure. She called me the last day, right? I said, yes, Elise, do it. I have no doubts that she's gonna do it. But I want to let everybody know that Elise, with my heart, is doing what she truly cares. She's not going to put money. She only probably has what she's gonna make. She could tell me. But she really truly has a parent in her heart. She loves Tuskegee, and I hope to see other young people to go back home and help build, you know, if we need more people to come back here. You know, I did the same thing to myself. I came to Tuskegee and started building. So she saw that, that we don't follow the, the brother work system. So we truly encourage that everyone, if you go somewhere, you come back, that's the beauty. Encourage the decent. Right?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Elise's mother. And, um, I've known Elise for a little while, about thirty something years. Um, I would just say that, um, you know, uh, when we made the transition from Virginia to, uh, move back to Alabama, um, Elise asked me, why did we have to move? And, um, I didn't have a really good solid reason. I just kind of told her, I said, you know, wanting to move closer to family and friends, and so that was not acceptable to her because she had left a community of friends that, um, she had bonded with. And, um, when she was about five, that's when we moved. When we were living in Virginia, Elise was a very, very, uh, friendly person. She would sneak out of the house, um, without taking care of her little sister, maybe all over the neighborhoods and someone's house, and I'd have to take the little sister and, and go and try to knock on the doors and figure out what house she was at. Sure enough, she'd be in someone's house, uh, playing with the, the friends. But I said all that to say that she was always, um, a very friendly, seeking person. She loved people. Uh, she, um, befriended people. Um, she is a very caring person. She loves Tuskegee, and so since she moved here, she would not have it any other way. She's found a love for Tuskegee, a love for Megan County that she can't shake. And that's what she's been talking about for many years, is just what can I do? What can I do to serve this community? Um, so I know, I believe in her. Obviously, you all believed in her because you're here. I appreciate your support, your love. I pray for your continued support and your patience as she tries to understand her job and her role. And, um, she will be the one that will do everything she can within her power to make a difference. Thank you so much, Elise, and I love you much.
Good afternoon. I'm gonna ask Commissioners Robinson and Commissioner Fountain to join me, as well as Ms. Benjamin, because we want to, want to make some presentation to this commissioner. Commissioner Tarver, will you join us up front, please? Let's give her a hand as she talks. So it is good to see all of you all here today. But let me say this, and I know she's, she's gonna, gonna do a great job. But she needs you not just today, but in the months and years, because, you know, it's a sacrifice serving in public office. You know, it's not always easy. You vote for people, you put them in, and then you get them, and you don't support them while they're there. So we're gonna support this young lady all the way.
Right.
Just Commissioner Tarver, I am so happy to join with Commissioner Robinson and, and Sister, uh, Commissioner Fountain to, uh, first of all, say congratulations and welcome aboard. We're just honored to have you. We're just excited about it. We got some great things lined up. We already got, get to talk about some things we're gonna do and be excited about. But I want to, on behalf of the commission and all of the members of Megan County, first of all, ask Ms. Benjamin to present the official county P and P. And, and in addition to that, we're, we're going to present you key to the county. Now, this is the, if key to, this key opens all of the county facilities. As a commission, you have total access to everybody. So this is your total access. They're gonna present this to you, and you don't have to call nobody and open the door for you. Open the door yourself. I'm looking forward to working with you, Commissioner Fountain. And, you know, I, I'm gonna be, I feel poised. I'm gonna be, I'm gonna have to move Commissioner Robinson down. He got a pretty late on this side. I'm gonna have one on this side. I'm gonna put them to the bill, because I have to put on each side of me. I, I'm looking forward to working with you. Uh, I've known you for a while. I know your mom. I, I beat your dad, but I knew your mom as, as, as a young kid, at high school. And I knew there was something great about you that we're just excited about. And welcome aboard. We, we're getting ready. We're gonna work, gonna work because I don't know what's in store for Megan County. I didn't know that God, that God chose you for this position, okay? We didn't choose you. God chose you. Live up to his dreams. Thank you. Let's make things great in this county. God bless you. We love you. We're looking forward to the future of working with you.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is Elise Torbitt and her family and friends, and that's it. Let's do it all. So congratulations. We all look forward to working with you, and we will make a powerful. So may God bless you on this new journey. We're gonna be right there, all of us working together. So God bless.
Mr. Tarver, let me, uh, join my colleagues and, and welcome to the Megan County Commission. As the chairman said, I've known your mom for a while as well, as a student at Tuskegee University. I've been both contributing to the university, along with Chairman Gray. Uh, I don't know nineteen hundreds, but, but no. We've seen you shine, the university, your academics, professional attributes, what have you. We watched you the last month. You didn't wait until you became a boost. We saw you moving around, coming educated, you become an advocate. They were associating back to this is Alabama, to their state black convention. You came to the, uh, I would also say the Black County officials, we were together a few weeks ago. Uh, so we, we noticed that, and it's a great thing to set an example for those who are yet to come, that you get involved prior to. Thank you. Congratulations to you. Looking forward to working.
Not coming back, but I want to have a, a point of special privilege on behalf of Dr. Elaine Harrington. Uh, she wants to, she sensed she regrets that she could not be here, but she wanted to send a token and express our appreciation. So I'm gonna ask Ms. Benjamin to present this on behalf of Dr. Elaine Harrington.
And speaking to Dr. Harrington today, she asked if I would do this on her behalf, in her behalf. And it is my privilege and honor to present to you the spoken, uh, regrettance from Dr. Elaine Harrington. And read, Commissioner Elise Torbitt, bless him as you can bring to his political arena, Sister Dr. Elaine Harrington.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm Rhonda McCloud of the town of Shorter. I think I'm the only one here, so I did want to say a few words just to tell Ms. Elise that we're gonna help her in any way that we can, anything that she needs. We're gonna all work together. As Ms. Fountain just said, we're gonna build one of four and try to get things done for the whole county. Not just for us, it's, it's Shorter, but everybody. So it's gonna be a joint effort and welcome aboard.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
A true leader is not just one who leads, but one who inspires, guides, and leads. The call of duty, the weight to bear, to serve the people with love and care. She does not seek power for her own sake, nor does she resort to force or fake. Her way to, though, her way to the top, for she knows well that true leadership helps others excel. She listens closely to each other and points and works to honor every choice with policy, actions, and decisions. She lives her community with her clear vision. She leads by example with integrity, with honesty, and transparency. For Elise knows that her actions declare the kind of leader who truly is fair. She inspires others to be their best, to strive their, for excellence, to never rest. In pursuit of dreams and worthy goals, she makes a difference and touches souls. Elise and I first connected in D C, me as an intern on Capitol Hill and Elise working in environmental justice. From our first meeting when we teamed up to support students in Macon County through her organization Next Step Up. Elise has taught me that when you see a problem, you stand on, you don't just stand on the sidelines and react. She isn't just a politician, she's a true citizen dedicated to serving each of us. I just want to congratulate my dear friend and sister commissioner, Elise Talbot, and I am Omari Neal, her best friend.
Good evening, everyone. Omari, don't sit down. Uh, I met Elise with Junior Miss. Junior Miss and um, distinguished young women, I think both of you were in high school. Right. Uh, is Judge Vigil still here? I was looking for those people who worked with us during that time. But anyway, Elise was a true leader even then. Uh, she started somewhere doing Next Step Up. Yeah, freshman year. And um, I noticed how everything you said here today is the kind of person she is. Sweet, always wanting her community and the students that she encountered to do better. Uh, have the kind of same uh, opportunities that she had. We are very proud of her. If there are other junior misses or distinguished young women in the crowd. Um, were you two thousand nine?
Yes.
And you were sixteen.
And seventeen.
Come on, Amelia, what? I said others. You see, after a few days. All right, all right. See, uh, all of these ladies, I've met a lot of leaders during the Junior Miss and Distinguished Young Women's program. And Elise, I want to take this opportunity to congratulate you, and I wish for you the very best. I'll be praying, and thank you for stepping up to serve. Uh, you'll find this is a different experience.
All right, I'm Mary Luke, I just thought everybody was there. With the Macon County Board of Education and distinguished young women and. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm State Representative Pepa Warren, and as always, I have to admit that truly this is a day that the Lord has made, and we have so much to rejoice about. We've all had an opportunity to witness the swearing in of a young. Female county commissioner. And truly, you know, I pray so often, and I ask God, I said, Lord, you know, we've gotten lost from our young people. Yeah. We got to find ways to get back. So I just want this to be the true encouragement for all of our young people. We need you. We need to hear your voice, we need your vote to move this community forward. Because old folks, we ain't gonna be able to do it. We need young people. And I know it's, it's a big sacrifice for anybody to run in the elected position. But all you have to do is to be willing, be prayerful at all times. And I will assure you, Elise, I assure you that God will not let you down. He'll hold you up to be successful. So I love you, and you know, I'm always there for you. Whatever you need, just give me a call. Thank you, and God bless.
The city council president, city officials here, like you just joined us. It's tough right here. Down the hall, it's here. That's why we, we not have our meeting. Commissioner Talbot, our meeting is delayed. Our meeting is officially delayed, so we can all be here. First of all, I want to say congratulations. Uh, I think uh, I represented, took my words because when I see Commissioner Talbot now here today, we recognize all the work that she's done in the past. And I think that's what's key. We want other young people to be encouraged by what she's done. Because it didn't start today. It didn't start when she decided to run for office. It started years ago when she was serving this community. And the critical part is Representative Warren was saying she was serving the youth of this community. Because there's a disconnect, we know it, we saw it in the national election. It's not hard, and we got work to do to get with our young people, to strengthen what we're building in this country. Because if not, we're gonna lose some things. So we can't lose any more generation. So first of all, thank you for being willing to serve. I'm gonna say to Elise, I appreciate her efforts earlier for all the work that she did early. But I also want you to know that she's constantly working. You know, we've had marches, who's leading those marches? Because Elise was out front with us. When I went to Washington DC when I was first elected in twenty sixteen, when I was invited by EPA nationally to come to Washington DC, and they paid for it, Elise was there to welcome me and see that she welcomed me as a new mayor coming to Washington DC while she worked with EPA. At the end of October, I had to go on a, a form for the Public Health Association of America. Twelve thousand people in public health came, I was on the panel, Elise was there. And that was just recently. So she's constantly been working, and that's a great example for all our young people. So I thank you for the work that you do. I thank your family, I know all of your family. I knew your father, I've done business with him, knew your mother in education, and I've seen you at Tuskegee University. So that's why it's such a great day in Tuskegee. Because we not only have someone from Tuskegee who's been doing things in Tuskegee, we have a Tuskegee graduate, T U. She was doing it. And she started, by what she was given strength and energy to do and to train in Tuskegee, she was always involved. So I'm gonna stop with that, any other of our city officials want to say something, just want to say again, congratulations. We look forward to working with you. We know what you can do and will do, and we know your passion for the Tuskegee, Macon County community. Chairman Maxwell, you know, it's a great day in the city Tuskegee.
Good afternoon, everyone. Um, it is just a delight to be here to witness a young lady that I've known since she was playing basketball as a young person before she even got to high school with my nieces. But I want to just say to Elise, you know, Elise has called me for several years and said, we need to sit down and talk. Things were on her mind and on her heart, and she chose me to be a sounding board for some of those things. I want to thank her for her trust in that. And one of the things that Elise and I talked about was the need, and now more so than ever, for this county to have a countywide strategic plan for our well-being that includes all of the municipalities and all of the people. And so hopefully, at least we can make that a reality in the very near future. So just congratulations, I look forward to seeing what God is gonna do with you next.
Good evening, everyone. It is definitely a great day to be here to support my good friend, Elise Talbot. It's so great to have someone else from my generation joining me. And that's, that's nothing they can't say, everybody else. And we are excited because this is long overdue. This is something that Elise deserves. She's worked hard for it her whole life, and this is just the beginning for you. I'm so proud of you. You know, we've talked about how we can, what we can do individually to impact this community. But I think really collectively, we have the power to take this community to heights, not only that we've seen it in the past, but to new heights. So to Elise Talbot, thank you so much. And I look forward through the organizations that she has helped to create, Macon County Youth Council, Next Step Up, developing and mentoring and inspiring other young people to run for office as well. So that's what you're doing by serving in this position. Thank you.
Elise, remember when you ran for Miss Tuskegee University? I, she will always be by Miss Tuskegee University. Mr. Mayor, Council says this is our city council meeting ceremony, ceremony. I'd like to move that we proclaim this night as Elise Talbot's night in Tuskegee, Alabama. So move.
Move your private second and accept it as a proclamation by the city of Tuskegee.
But I, I want to say this, you know, I, I went to school with your parents. Your high, your daddy's high school classmates, college classmates. We went to U together, so I've been knowing them all their life. I told your mama, I said, I remember y'all, so I come. Anyway, they did a great job of raising you. I'm proud, I'm proud of you. And I know you're doing great things in Macon County and Tuskegee. Thank you.
If y'all see us tip out, we is officially late for our meeting.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Frankie Moon. And I've actually known Elise for a long time. Matter of fact, she was school with my son. And um, this is really a wonderful occasion. When I met Elise and we really developed a ton of friendship and conversations and group conversations, I actually wanted her to run for something else. Uh, because I know, you know, I just have that much confidence in her ability and her mind, and also her love for this city. But there are a few words I just want to say because this is something that I used during my elections and I also saw with Elise. And it's very short, but it just makes you think about things. Through a looking glass, distorted the truth. That's how I see me. How do I see you? How do you see you? Flawed and imperfect and perfectly made. That is who we are, but not how we should behave. And with respect and honor, she did that in her campaign. And each time that I see her, she's, she's being a lady. And on behalf of the employee, uh, I'm the Personnel Director with County. And I just want her to know that I will do whatever I need to do to make sure that she feels like she's part, really part of this county and this commission. So anything, anything that you need or questions that you may have that I can definitely answer, please do not hesitate. Employees know and everyone knows that my door is open. Uh, so all you have to do is go a little mouth and step on in. All right? Love you, congratulations.
Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome to the stage our commissioner of District Three, Commissioner Elise Talbot. Give a round of applause.
Hey. I know I have to find words to say to encapsulate this experience. And I enjoy talking, and yet at this moment, I'm almost out of words. There's a quote by Martin Luther King that says, everyone can be great because everyone can serve. And as I look around our community, I see a number of great people. Many people unnoticed, unsung heroes who are great because of the numerous ways in which they serve. I've seen people pick up trash that was on the street who never once be recognized. I've seen people knock on doors to get people to vote. I've seen people just go deliver meals to people who are sick and shut in. I've seen people go to mentor and tutor high school students. I see teachers, I see current and former elected officials, people who are doctors, people who are gardeners, people who are farmers. I just see a number of people who are great because of the ways in which they serve. And none of the ways in which we serve are greater than others. So for me, it is my distinct honor and pleasure to know that you all find me responsible enough to serve Macon County in District Three in this, in this role. And that is not a responsibility that I take lightly. I appreciate the support that everyone has given me to get to where I am right now. You know, sometimes people say, oh, do you think you could do this because you're a woman or that, because you're black or this or that? And I think about how my parents raised me. They never raised me to believe in limitations, not even not to believe in them, I didn't know that they existed. So as now the second woman county commissioner, I know that that is a big feat because our count, country has still yet to elect a woman in the highest role despite the fact that we've had very qualified women run. But for me personally, I never thought of it being significant because my father never told me I couldn't do anything because I was a girl. And that's the kind of world that I envision. I envision a world in which people have the skills, the tools, and the motivation to reach limitless possibilities. A world in which people can be and live as their authentic selves and their authentic power. And so that's the type of world that I seek to create as I step into this position of service. It's what I've done, it's what I've spent my life doing so far in my professional career. And even in friendships and just in my relationships with my sisters and my brother, my sister Melanie, who cannot be here today. My sister Amelia Talbot, who was at the back, my brother Nathan Talbot. And my nephew Malcolm Talbot, who helped me run for county commissioner. He is also on this ticket, I'll just let you know, he's in the red shirt and the middle. And he is now also your actual youngest county commissioner. Malcolm, come up here. He be bringing the grandma campaign. I'll tell you that, he really did, and he was very excited for today as well. Um, yeah, I, I would just say, um, I'm humbled, I'm excited, I'm a little bit nervous, I'm ready to work, and I feel very strong. And just know that I have most of your phone numbers out here. If I don't have your phone number, I'm gonna get it. So please believe that over these next four years, I will be calling on you for your help, for your love, for your support, for your time, all of that. I thank you all so much for being here. It is true that you could be anywhere in the world, and you are here with me. So I thank you and I appreciate you for that. Oh, and I forgot Emery, sorry, my little baby Emery, my eleventh month old niece is also in the bag. Oh, and I forgot Emery. Sorry, my little baby Emery, my 11-month-old niece is also in the back. And someone mentioned before doing things for the future. And when I think about my nephew and my niece, who's five years old and 11 months old, I do want this to be a community that they feel happy to live in. It has all of the resources they need to live here. So that's also one of the reasons I ran. But yes, I'm very happy to have you all here. I'm excited to celebrate. We have a reception right across the street that will start immediately after this. And I look forward to working with you all, working with the commission, working with the township, working with Tuskegee University. I want to recognize that Mr. Van Sap, Vice President of External Affairs, is here also. Yes, working with the university as well. Because we are one, as Frankie Beverly and May say, we are one. All right, with that, I'll turn it over. Thank you so much.
Yeah, let's give Commissioner Tobler another round of applause. Now it is time for us to part from this event, but not from each other. We will always stay together. We'd like to bring forth Pastor Joshua Lewis, who will give us our closing prayer.
Good evening. I have to say again, congratulations. Let's pray. Well, we thank you for this momentous occasion in marking, not the beginning, but a point in the journey. A great journey, a powerful journey, one of building together and building better. One of unity, one of forward progress and upward climb. One of not just thinking, but materializing and actualizing. One of not just ideas, but that that is material and real. We thank you so much, God, for blessing this young woman who is standing in a powerful place, who will do powerful things with the people in mind. We thank you so much that as we leave this place, that we are under your blessing, that we are building in your power, so that what we build will not be in vain. God, may we go together, may we go in grace, and may you allow the sister to lead and may you allow the people to follow. And may we all follow you. It's in Christ's name we do pray. And bless the food, bless all these things that we will do to partake in and celebrate this great day. In your name, amen.
Please join us over at the annex for celebration.
How are you?
Yeah.